City Council of Granberry, regular meeting at 6:00 PM Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. And we are in Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And I do want to remind you that you could be watching this, or you may see it later, at www.granberry.org/live. And you could also find it on our YouTube channel for anything that comes up at a later time, or you want to pull it up at a later time. We'll get to the meeting rolling here with Pastor Barry Robinson of the Acton Methodist Church. Pastor Robinson, please stand, please.
Ladies and our heads. Dear heavenly and gracious Father, Lord, we thank you so much for your grace and your mercy that you've shown to us. We thank you so much for this great nation that we live in, and we have this opportunity to live in a great county. Father, we pray as councilmen go through this meeting, Lord, that you would grant them wisdom, and that you would give them your knowledge, and help them, Lord, to do what is right. Father, we pray that you would help them to seek ways to serve and to help others. And Father, may your blessing be upon them during this time, for in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Robinson. Now if you'll join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and protected, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state for God, one individual.
Thank you all very much for that. We're going to move right on to proclamations and presentations, and we have a couple of proclamations for the Elizabeth Crockett Chapter, the DAR, and the proclamation for September 11th, this Patriot Day, a national day of service and remembrance. The ladies from the DAR will join me, and the gentlemen, anyone's here. I think it's appropriate that we have both the DAR young lady, and we'll be talking about September the 11th in just a few minutes here. Why don't you come over here? All right. Well, welcome. She's the region? Okay. Well, welcome, Christine. And you come in from?
Up, gone.
All right. Well, that's quite a ways away. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate all of you being here. Let me go ahead and read this, because it's also celebrating something very, very special that comes to us next year, our 250th anniversary, our birthday in the United States of America. So whereas on July 4th, 2026, our nation will celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, and whereas this milestone invites us to reflect on our past, honor the contributions of all Americans, and look ahead to future generations who will carry forward the ideals of democracy and liberty. And whereas, though Texans did not fight in the Revolutionary War, they supported the cause with prayers and cattle. And whereas, the Texas Daughters Elizabeth Crockett Chapter is the local chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, and are descended from patriots of the American Revolution. And whereas the chapter will present America 250, the American Revolution Experience, September the 12th and 14th at the Gordon House on Pearl Street in Granberry. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, commend this event to all city residents, and I congratulate and thank each and every one of you for putting this event on. So thank you. Please accept this proclamation from the City of Granberry.
Thank you very much.
And...
You will?
If you will. This is actually the first event kicking off the city's 250 celebration.
Yes. Out there, ladies and back, did you want to say something about that, too?
Well, we're really excited about it, and we have some other things that we want to do around Granberry to celebrate, you know, continue on with the 250 to welcome it in. So you'll be a part of it, too.
I'm sure. I'm sure everybody sitting in this room is going to be a part of it gratefully.
It's going to be three days. It's going to be three days, six hours a day. We're going to pretend to be famous people. It's going to be a blast. And so we do it for the city for three days, and then Monday we do it for the schools. So y'all need to come watch.
Bring your family.
Ladies, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. While they're coming up, each of you, I know, it's always hard to remember where you were on 9/11. Let me go ahead with the proclamation. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst terrorist attack on United States soil in our nation's history, and came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, performing countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas each year on this somber date, we remember those who's lost their lives at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and in a field in southwest Pennsylvania. We pay tribute to those who rose in service, and we honor those who continue to serve our country today. And whereas, as a community, we honor the people who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, risking and often sacrificing their own lives. And whereas Memorial Lane at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park provides the community an opportunity to recognize the valiant service and sacrifices given each day by members of our armed forces and first responders. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2025, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance in Granberry, Texas, and I urge all citizens to set aside September the 11th as a day to unite, reflect, and remember those who gave their lives on this day 24 years ago. The Friends of Memorial Lane invite the community to participate in a remembrance service at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park on Thursday, September the 11th, 2025, given under my hand the seal of the City of Granberry on the second day of September, Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Ladies, gentlemen, we are so appreciative of what you do at Memorial Lane, but this is one of those, this is one of those occasions. Who's speaking today? You?
It's Mike Smith.
Thank you, sir. 24 years ago, yeah, worse the terrorists attacking the United States. We lost 2,977 people, and 343 of them were firefighters, 77 were law enforcement, eight were from the EMS services. 55 military personnel got killed at the Pentagon, and there's been countless others, they say up to 25,000 people, that were injured within these attacks. We got two decades of young Americans that don't understand what it was like to wake up that day and see the news, or where you were at when it happened. So I encourage you all to invite your friends, family members to come out. I'm going to have Tunnels to Towers is going to bring out the artifacts from the World Trade Center like they did last year, and General Robin Aiken will be our speaker this year for it. And the world famous Jerry Allen will be doing a few songs for us. 6:30 on September 11th.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, and thank each and every one of you. Chair? Where's Mike? Who's going to get this proclamation? There we go. Put your hand, put your hand on your head. Put your hand to the chair. All right. Thank you. Thank you. There are a lot of things to like about Mayor, there's a lot of things that you might dislike, but honoring our veterans, honoring those particularly from 9/11 is, it's an honor, and you have to like it. Speaking of things that you might like, it's time for the city council and city manager to issue encouraging statements and recognize the staff. Thank you, Ms. Burwell. Appreciate you putting that out there for us. Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. I believe we have a little video that Carlos is going to play for us to kind of start this off.
It has no sound.
I figured that out.
Could we hum along? Oh, my.
It'll all make sense here in a minute, after I explain it. All right. Thank you. So that was a little bit of the airport work that our Parks Department actually participated in. First, they worked with the landscaping around the airport sign. That's never been done before. That's at least at the new facility, and we wanted to brag on them a little bit. And also, they installed French drains on those downspouts that go out into that area behind the facility to, you can see how we hadn't been able to get grass to grow because of the erosion, and so we're working on landscaping that more, and those guys have been instrumental in getting that done. They put that French drain in in less than two hours, and if we'd have hired somebody, we got a cost that was like $15,000. So we did that with forced labor in-house, and I want to, I want to thank our, our team for doing that. I know Aaron McLean heads up World Up, and what a great job they do for us. I wanted to shout them out tonight as doing an exceptional project for us. And, you know, we overlook so many great things that the Park Department does. More, they mow over 400 acres of grass. If you stop and think about it, it's incredible, all the grass that we have to mow, and they take care of us in great ways, keep our city looking good, and I just want to give them a big appreciation. So, thank you all. There's plenty more I could talk about, but I will yield my time.
Counsel? Well, thank you. I'll take some of your time. There's, I have a folder here and paper here that has something on it that I think you can only give the council and certainly staff and Mr. Kaufman credit for. And it is from the, it is the 2025 UTP. It's adopted on August 22nd, 2024. These projects are funded, categories 2, 4, and 12 are funded. And here's a project down here in the Fort Worth District that says US 377, Hood County, Overstreet Boulevard, Pirate Drive, funding adjustment on category 2, other estimated costs, but authorized funding category 2, $75 million. Is that right? And authorized funding category 4, $52 million for Texas to proclaim that we are funded Overstreet to Pirate Drive for $127 million. So we'll get that done by Wednesday, I guess. Yeah. That's, I mean, it's on the page. It is absolutely on the page, and we're going to deliver it. And then I have just another example of the great things that the city staff does and the progress that's being made on a continuing basis here at Granberry, in the City of Granberry. This weekend, a local establishment opened up in, down on the square. Why, they chose Labor Day weekend. The owner told me quite, quite honestly, he says, "I wanted to stress the staff to see how good they really are." And he said, "They are good, they're really, really good, but the people that I really appreciate are the ones that are at City Hall. You have some of the friendliest people that you will ever find at City Hall, and they are so well organized." And then he called out a few names, and we'll call those names at another time. And we certainly have already said thanks to them at least once or twice today. But he also said something that made my ears perk up. He started a business, opened up a business on the square four years ago, and four years ago was different than this time. He said, "Into the planning group," thank you, planning group, "into the planning group, the development group, the whole bit." He said, "It was so well organized, they were so friendly, and they had everything online. I could do most of what I needed to do from my computer." And we must save, he said, "We saved months by doing this. I am so appreciative of that." And I've known how hard you and your staff have worked to get that in place. I want to recognize you and the community development, planning, the whole group. Thank you for putting that computer system in place and making sure that it works. So, anybody else want something? All right.
Nobody can top that.
Nobody tops that. I'm sorry.
The parks, pretty hard to overcome.
All right. We now have public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items, and I believe that Mr. Richard Haef would like to speak on 7.6, or do you want, if you wanted to wait, we will let you wait, but, no, you can go ahead. Go ahead, we'll do it now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Agenda item 7.6 is to consider approving or disapproving the HCAD annual budget for 2026. And in your staff report for this item, it lists a number of things that have happened historically with the HCAD budget. And granted, from the years 2018 through 2023, there were some things that happened with the budget that, let's say, were at least eyebrow-raising. And as a result, you asked the HCAD to do a forensic audit, which is underway, that's still in progress, and we don't know what the results will be. We don't know if the forensic auditors will say things were done properly or improperly. But we're not here tonight, or you're not here tonight, to talk about things in the past, but next year's operational budget. And I noticed there's really nothing about next year's operational budget in the staff report, so I wanted to give you a few highlights of it. First off, it's a zero-based bottom-up budget. What that means, instead of taking last year's budget and adding money to it, as lazy people do, Mr. Law started with a zero budget, and he took every item that needed to be done and put into a budget. So if he has to mail out reappraisal notices, well, it costs so much for envelopes and so much for stamps, and that's in there. The personnel staff, personnel costs are in there, the ARB costs are in there. It's built up to show what it will cost to operate the office in the coming year. I've been through that budget with a fine-tooth comb, and I will assure you, there's no particular waste in that budget. Now, the budget shows an increase of staff salaries of about 4%, which is pretty much in line with what the city and county are doing with their employees, and it shows inflation on all the others, you know, postage is going up, utilities are going up. We see that in the city budget as well. But when it's all said and done, the proposed budget for HCAD is 3% less than last year's budget, because it's been scrubbed to be as lean as reasonable, and it reduced a head count. Some of you may recall a year ago, when we talked about the 2025 budget, I stood here at this podium and recommended you disapprove it for the reasons that are in your staff report. This year, I think that the budget is solid, and I think that it's something that you should approve, or at least not disapprove. Now, there's a question in there about finding ways to repay the city for monies that may have been improperly spent in the past. I think it's premature to have that discussion, because a forensic audit has not been completed yet, and we don't know if the monies were improperly spent in the past, or how much they may be, or what the corrective actions may be. So since this is an operational budget, it's my recommendation to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda routine are previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring forth to the deliberation agenda? I see nobody waving their hands, so do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corgan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to the deliberation agenda. 7.1, public hearing is considering approving the request of Chris Blevins to replat lots 3A-R1 and 3C-R, Block 5 of the Trailer Horton Edition, located at 851 North Keith Street. We will have staff give their presentation, and then afterwards, after questions have been asked, we'll open up the public meeting. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At this point, I'll turn over the next three items on the agenda to our Community Development Director, Kara Wawee. So take it away, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. So this request is to split one property into two formerly plotted lots. The site is shown here on your slide. It's about a half acre in size. It's a residential 8.4, and the plating that's proposed would meet all of the requirements. This shows the replat, it's a little bit zoned in, so you can really see those two And this is a residential replat, as such, it requires a public hearing, and public notice was sent as per the law to 19 property owners, and also published in the newspaper. We received one letter in support and nothing in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends approval. These are your voting options, if you have any questions.
I have one question. Are both of these lots going to be served by city sewer?
They are considered bested, so they're, they would be.
Well, I just wonder if they're there, if their sewer there.
So there, there is service in that area, yes.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Wadley?
Now you can talk. There you go. Good work, man. Yeah. Is it presently one lot, Kara?
So it's presently, they're splitting one lot to make two.
So in the description, it said the new lots would be created from a portion of lots 1 and 3 on Block 5. Is that, that's like an old thing?
That's a correct statement. It's an old thing. It's just the way that those lots are described.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak, raise your hand, come up to the mic, give us your name and address. I see no one raising their hand, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have other questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the request of Chris Blevins to replat lots 3A-R1 and 3C-R, Block 5 of the Trailer Horton Edition, located at 851 North Keith Street?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconds. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. 7.2, same process, this too is approval, a, a public hearing, and we're going to consider adopting ordinance number 25-52, approving the request of Chris Pinion for a zoning change from interim holding to planned development slash light commercial, and interim holding to light commercial, located at 3210 Loop 567. Ms. Wawee?
Thank you. So this is the overall site location at the Loop and 377 on the west side of town. The property is proposed for a zone change. The purpose is for a convenience store with fuel pumps and truck fueling only with a PD. The other portion of the proposal is a zoning for light commercial on, on other property. So, the, okay. This slide shows two triangle-shaped properties, and those two do not have development coming with them at this time, and they're proposed for standard light commercial zoning, and that is offices and retail types of development. This is the hard corner outlined on this side, and the zoning proposed is planned development, light commercial, and the use is as stated. The project requests with PD are for the permitted uses to include fueling for trucks only. That would be the request for the use in the light commercial district. We've seen that before on other properties. And the other variance is a request for additional parking, a rate that would allow them to have more parking than the current ordinance provides. And here we are. My clicker is stuck. Thank you. This is the site plan. It shows access on both the Loop and on 377. The convenience store sits in the middle of the site. The automobile or passenger vehicle fueling would be along 377 with truck fuel at the north side of the property, along Loop 567. And it's still stuck. Sorry. Thank you. These are the elevations of the proposed convenience store, and that would have a restaurant within it, as well as the typical convenience retailing. This is the landscape plan, showing landscaping along the street and throughout the property as per code. Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission make considerations during their recommendation, and for this particular property, the change would allow for the use as stated. Infrastructure will be available. There's a moratorium agreement in place, the lines aren't too distant. The change of zoning would be a small increase in the overall supply of light commercial zoned property, and the comprehensive plan supports this request. And for public notice, we mailed out five public notices to property owners. We published in the newspaper, and we did not receive anything back from any of that effort. The staff recommendation and the, is for approval of both of the proposed zone changes, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Counsel, questions? This is another one of those we've seen here before, right? Okay. No questions up here. I'm going to have the public hearing open. Anyone would like to speak? I see no hands, see no one stepping forward, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So counsel, I'd like to hear a motion to consider adopting ordinance number 25-52, approving the request of Chris Pinion for a zoning change from interim holding to planned development slash light commercial, and interim holding to light commercial, located at 3210 Loop 567.
Make a motion to approve zoning change as requested.
Mr. Corgan makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Hallow makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Thank you. Again, a public hearing. 7.3, consider adopting ordinance number 25-53, approving the request of Bill Baird for a specific use permit to allow for used auto sales, auto repair, major, small tractor, and small implements sales and services and repair, new and used, ATV sales new, trailer sales and golf cart sales, new and used, and light commercial zoning. Property is located at 4603 East Highway 377. Ms. Wawee?
Thank you. So this slide shows the site location. The property is about eight acres in size. You might recognize this from a couple years ago. There was an SUP for the same use. The applicant is making a little bit of a modification. On this property, there's an existing auto sales and many On this property, there's an existing auto sales and many of the uses that are proposed are actually on the property right now. What happened was they've expanded to the portion of the site that is to the east and this SUP cleans this up. The zoning is currently heavy commercial. Sorry, Carla, thank you. And this outline in red shows the first phase, site plan. So this is where the light implements, ATVs and the small items would be sold and so on is, is in the request. And if you go out to the site, you'll see that they're pretty much all there right now. The remainder of the site will continue the automobile sales operations that, on the property also right now. And then the second plan, thank you ma'am, is the phase two. Eventually, they plan to move all of the, the implement sales and the ATVs and such onto the entire property. They have another site location for the vehicle sales. And if I've misspoke, I think there's a representative of the applicant that can correct me. These are the, the findings for this SUP. The use, we see a lot of these kinds of uses along three seventy-seven and it continues use that's very similar in nature and existing is, is the auto repair. So it's harmonious and compatible. The uses that are requested are associated with the proposed use. The nature of the use is reasonable and you can see that it's on the site and hasn't caused any complaints. The impact, does not appear to have impact on the surrounding area. And the other criteria is standard and reflects some of the building standards and the enforcement standards in our codes and, and ordinances. So we did send public notice, we received one response in favor and nothing in opposition and, and public notice was in the newspaper as well as by letters to surrounding property Staff is recommending approval of the SUP, subject to the specified use to the site plan and that all parking, maneuvering, display and storage be on an improved hard surface, which is a standard condition and it is a zoning ordinance requirement. And our other two conditions there are standard per our SUP requirements. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval with those conditions as stated. And then we have your voting options. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? Ms. Wawee? No? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this project? Yes, sir, if you give us, turn on that red light there, give us your name.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Baird with Baird Hampton of Brown. This is a two-phase SUP in preparation for Grandbury Nissan moving down the highway to the new facility. And the purpose is that when they move to the new facility, the entire corner will become tractor ATV implement sales. But the real reason I wanted to speak is I wanted to thank Mr. Kaufman for jumping in and helping us get an easement for our off-site sanitary sewer when we couldn't get it done. We had to have it to build a sewer line to serve the new Nissan dealership, worked with two property owners, couldn't get it, Mr. Kaufman got it done. So, thank you, Chris.
Really? Thank you, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Counsel? Okay. All right, I'd like to hear a motion, adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash five-three, approving the request of Bill Baird for a specific use permit to allow for all of those items that were previously read and are listed on our worksheet, ending with new and used in light commercial zoning. The property is located forty-six oh E, forty-six oh three, East Highway three seventy-seven.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the SUP is presented.
Mr. Hooverdo makes a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will be approved, six and oh. Thank you, Mr. Baird, for your time. Okay, now then, we'll move to seven point four. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-four, approving the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six annual operating budget beginning on October one, twenty-twenty-five and ending on September thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual operating budget. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. As we remember from last week, we had our public hearing for this budget at that time. Staff presented a budget with not knowing whether the county was going to participate in the regional radio network and they have since voted to sign an interlocal agreement but have not delivered it upon two requests that we've asked for it to be delivered, we have not received it. So tonight, we stand before you without a signed interlocal agreement. We feel like we provided an interlocal agreement in accordance with what they wanted, but we've had absolutely no feedback since Thursday and so we reached out to them twice asking for the resolution or the interlocal agreement. So with that, we were in the predicament that we needed to present a budget to you with a forty-two cent tax rate to fund the budget and we've covered that adequately in the past. And tonight, that's a little bit of confusion on what to do next. I think the city council needs to determine what they want to do moving forward. I would say that in, in the background of all this activity, we've been monitoring the special sessions related to taxation, the legislature, the senate adopted Senate Bill ten, co-sponsored by our very own Senator Birdwell, and they adopted a tax rate limit that would cap an increase of two and a half percent for any expenditures above current tax rates. If, if you exceed that two and a half percent, you would need to go for an election. As recent as twenty-nineteen, that multiplier was eight percent and it's been steadily going down ever since. The current law as presented, I don't know if it, I was told it passed today with, with a two and a half percent increase. At one point, the legislature was looking at a one percent increase that would trigger an election and they were putting two-thirds requirement to be approved. So basically, you would never get, get another cent in property tax other than the no new revenue rate under that bill. So they came back together as a conference committee and came up with a two and a half percent and I believe it's on the governor's desk waiting to be signed. So in the future, that only applies to cities or counties with population of seventy-five thousand. I would expect that the next legislative session, they come back and remove that seventy-five thousand, just like they did on the annexation ordinances where they said if you're under a certain limit, it doesn't apply to you and then the next session, they came back and made it apply to everybody. So that's the path that we're on. I believe Mr. Sorrell has seen some things from other city attorneys, I'm not sure if he's willing to share that, but I can just say that it's not been a positive environment for the sustainability of cities moving forward. And I think y'all need to make a decision of how much tax you want to assess and whether you want to anticipate the county's participation or not. I've done all I can do on that topic. Happy to answer any questions, if you have particular questions about the budget, about funding, anything we can do, staff and I are ready to respond for your questions, should you have any related to this budget approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hooverdo?
So, it's my understanding then, that this two hundred thousand dollars that we thought the county was gonna give us for the Grandbury Regional Radio Network, since we don't have that money, we have to include it in our budget as what we're gonna pay for. And in order to pay that, we have to have a point oh four two tax rate, correct? In order to have a balanced budget.
Yes, and it was more like three hundred thousand instead of two hundred thousand. And Ava, do you want to add anything to that conversation? No, that's fine, you don't have to, I'm just...
I can add three hundred thousand relates to about one point three cents.
Okay.
And I can also add that looking at...
Can you turn the microphone on?
I'll just repeat what I said. I said that three hundred thousand translates to about one point three cents. And we looked at the median home values, that was also posted by the central appraisal district. So on a four hundred thousand dollar home, one cent would be about forty dollars annually difference for them to look at from that side as well.
Other comments? Mr. Woodley?
So if we were considering thirty-nine and a half cents and, and the proposed rate's forty-two, but it would add one point three cents, that's forty point eight. So where's the other one point, or the, yeah, one point two come from? You follow?
Yes.
I mean, again, the rate we were gonna consider was thirty-nine and a half at the budget meeting in June.
Right.
And now it's forty-two, but you just said it'd be one point three to cover the county's portion, which would be forty point eight, not, instead of forty-two.
So we had some changes. One, one of them was the valuations actually came in lower than we considered at the budget workshop. So we had some loss there and, let me see, what else we have?
Did you include the cost of the connection with Stevensville in that one point three cents that we were gonna have to pay for internet connection, like fifteen hundred a month?
Right.
There were other costs that were associated that we would have to incur other than what the county was not paying to be able to keep this network on a regional basis.
Yeah, I, I believe that, that is included in the three hundred thousand dollars difference, yes.
Chris, on our budget, what was the tax rate that was proposed to meet that budget? Was it thirty-nine, what was it, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine and a half is what we talked about at the budget workshop.
And on the worksheet that HCAT came back, was the no new revenue would be thirty-nine four.
Point four, right.
I mean, to me, I think doing a budget close to what we need, which is point thirty-nine five, with anticipation that the county is going to provide safety and police response with their, with that contract signed. If you, if, the worst case scenario is you have three hundred thousand dollars that is not funded, we always are over budget when, at the end of the year and we use it for projects and we allocate that excess money to projects and that is what we can allocate some of that money to if, if they don't fund it. If that's not feasible, I mean, we are fifteen percent over what the city council has voted to keep in excess funds. So we're at forty percent, the required excess funds amount is at twenty-five percent, so we over budget by fifteen percent of our annual budget. So if, if that's the case, I mean, we have money that we don't have to increase the tax rate to forty-two, we can keep it at point three nine five.
I, I do need to add something to that, so that budget workshop considered a tax rate of three nine nine nine, not three nine five.
Three nine nine nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for calling it out.
Yes.
I forgot that.
So, the, the county has not signed anything. I mean, this is an ongoing saga and I was remote but dialed into the meeting that was held, was it last Friday?
Thursday.
Last Thursday. And I am not surprised that we don't have an approved agreement today because we were not close. We were way off. In fact, they were talking about a partnership versus helping pay for this activity. So I also wanted to read what the voter approval tax rate comprises. It's a no new revenue, maintenance and operations rate, it's just the maintenance and operations, not our utility rates, times one point oh two five. And that was scratched from one point oh three five down to one point oh one five for the last three weeks. We've been on the phone and calling and going and visiting for the last three weeks to, to make sure that our legislators understood what they were doing to the cities with a one point one five rate, much less a one point, I think three fives too low. The, anyway, it's operations rate times one point oh two five plus the current debt rate plus the unused increment rate minus the sales tax gain rate. So if we have a banner year in sales tax, any sales tax gains get taken away. You know, Chris mentioned, you know, there's a chance, there's a possibility that this is the last increase we, that we have because they're gonna continue doing this. And then you wake up this morning and find out, and to your, to the, to how would you spend the money, Eddie? You find out that one of our major infrastructures, taxpaying infrastructures has been, I don't want to say sold, but it has been transferred ownership into a non-for-profit or for, you know, nonprofit organization and all of a sudden, we're losing close to two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand in, in property tax. So boom, boom. You, you know, the two hundred thousand, we're looking, we're gonna be looking for money down the road. I'm not, and I'm, I'm not liking spending the money, but I understand when your chemicals go up thirty percent and you want to provide water and you're gonna raise rates. When your police requirements go up X percent, we're gonna provide safety, we're gonna provide safety to the community. I keep looking at you, Ava, like you did this to us, but don't, don't take that, don't take that way. I'm just, I'm very, I'm very leery of not approving the budget that we have since we've already had changes that are negative and hopefully we'll have changes that are positive. But we've had some big changes that are negative and hopefully, and it is, hoping in one hand, that the county will agree with the, not, not just the language, they were having problems with the numbers and the language. So I'm not really willing to take that bet at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Woodley.
Mayor, what did the county actually approve then? It's my understanding that they, that they approved to participate. What exactly did they approve?
Let me ask Michael to come to the microphone. He's the one that represented Grandbury Regional Radio Network for an extended meeting on Thursday.
In the end of it all, the county did approve the interlocal agreement contingent on adding three items that basically were already being done by the city and the county and so it was not a problem to agree to add those. They continued to talk about postponing the meeting and not voting and I, I tried to stress that our city council really needed action and, in order... our city council really needed action in, in order to consider what was before you tonight. And they eventually voted to approve it contingent upon adding those three items, which they had probably within an hour or two in front of them. And I had one follow-up question, and I tweaked a little language on that one and, and sent it to them. And there was no more dialogue after that. They said they had everything they needed. And I just kept saying, can we get this signed and over to us? We need to get this signed and over to us. I asked for Friday, as soon, as soon as they could get it to us, and that didn't happen. And then, of course, told them today's a holiday. So we still don't have it. We hoped to have it this morning. When we didn't, I immediately sent an email saying we're still waiting on the, the signed agreement. And I didn't get any response out of the four staff members that I sent that to.
Anyone have questions for, Mr. Ross? Mr. Rodriguez?
So Mayor, if I'm hearing you correct, you're proposing to have a tax increase?
I am proposing that we move to adopt the ordinance number twenty-five fifty-four, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six annual operating budget, which requires to be a balanced budget. The expenses that are laid out in it would require a property tax increase, which would be the next motion, which would move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual operating budget. We built the budget, built it-
We, we built the budget on the point three nine nine eight, not the point four two. We've, we've done this, we've done this network radio system without the county from the beginning, and I believe the city can continue without the county even if they don't participate. We funded it. We found the funding. We've used excess funds in the past to, to do this project. And I think we can do the same thing. If you look at your attachments, every fiscal year, we have money left over. And that was only a fraction, a ten percent fraction of what we have left at the end of the year. We can, we can take that money at the end of the year and fund this project. There's no need to put the burden on the taxpayer when we have the funding. And what you're proposing is to increase their tax rate to forty-two instead of giving it to what we had budgeted to the point three nine eight or the three nine five.
That's eighty dollars, right?
Eighty dollars could mean a lot for a lot of people.
On a four hundred thousand dollar home.
I mean, you take eighty dollars and you multiply it by the number of people that are paying property tax, that's a lot of money.
About three hundred thousand, I would assume. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You'll need to sign up, eh?
I really like that one.
Question?
Yeah. The next item, seven point five, is actually approving the top, the property tax rate. So voting for seven point four right now is just basically approving the budget. Is that correct?
We have to ratify the tax rate.
No, you have to-
It's seven point five.
You have to approve the budget. Yeah, we have to approve the budget. We have to adopt the ordinance approving the fiscal year budget. So if we know that we're gonna drop the tax rate, if we know that we're, if we think that we're gonna move the fiscal year tax rate, what do you want to take out of the budget? You gotta take something.
What do you think we're putting in that's increasing this?
The, the cost to manage and run the radio system for the county.
And, and how much excess funds do we have at the end of the year, last year and the year before that?
Hold on a second.
Just, just briefly, Eddie, I understand you're talking about going into reserves if we don't have enough money. But the law requires that a balanced budget is passed, so the expenditures in this budget cannot exceed the revenue. So we can't take a lower tax rate with this budget because it's not gonna cover it. It would be an illegal budget, and it would make us take the same budget we had last year. So the, the, either something has to come out of the budget to get it down to that rate, or we have to increase the rate to meet the budget. We can't rely on the reserves to pass the budget legally.
Okay, but we always have excess funds.
Sure, we have reserves.
Yeah, no, we have more than what we have. We, we, we made this budget at point three nine eight.
Right, but that three nine nine was before we got the valuations from the CAD. And so when they came in, they were lower, so that three nine nine wasn't gonna meet it, so it had to be increased.
The CAD, the no-new revenue rate is at point three nine four. We can adopt the three nine four. That's based on the appraisal district.
We could, but we're not gonna meet the budget. So we're gonna have to decide what gets cut then, if, if we're gonna go with that rate.
Do you wanna make that decision tonight? Is that decision made tonight?
We have to do it today. Has to be done today.
Okay. So you're talking about cutting something that we don't have any purview about, whether or not we're gonna meet or balance the budget. You don't know that, right?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
I don't understand the question that way.
So you're saying we're not gonna meet the budget. We have to do the tax increase by point four two in order to meet the budget.
Or take something out of the budget if you want to.
That's what I don't understand. You're saying take out something out of the budget.
Well, we take out, we'll take out two police.
Now you're being extreme, but we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars or, I mean, point three nine eight is what we had at the budget. Am I correct?
Three nine nine.
Three nine nine.
Yes, three nine nine.
And that's with the evaluations?
Then we got the final evaluations, and as soon as we got the final evaluations, we lost a little over, almost sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so what, what cent would that be now? Sixty thousand dollars? How many, what fraction of a cent would that be? So we can increase it from three nine nine to what?
Hold on.
So sixty thousand dollars, that's what we're losing?
Yeah.
That's forty per penny, so.
Probably like point four cents.
Point four cents. Three nine nine, point four. So forty point four, four oh, or point zero four, zero three. Am I correct? So that's where I'm getting confused. It's point four zero three, and you wanna make it to point four two.
So the way I understand this conversation is going is the mayor doesn't want to rely on the county to execute the inter-local agreement and move forward. Eddie does, and that's what needs to come out of the budget if we're gonna adopt the lower rate. I think I've framed that properly.
But according to what Jeremy just stated, we can't legally depend on them to do or not to do because we don't have a signed agreement.
That is correct. It's a good point of order.
And for you, yeah, thank you, Greg. Well, and-
No, I know we have to include it, but I'm saying we can't depend on them to sign it, which would allow us ultimately to reduce the rate because it's not signed yet.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. It has to be included. We do not have a signed agreement with the county. They, they could go back, sorry.
They could go back in their next meeting, and someone could say, I make a motion to reconsider it or Robert's rules of order, get a second, and they say, you know, we did say this at the last meeting, but we didn't execute the contract. We changed our mind. It's a cost that we know is, is going to occur. We have to budget for it. If they come along later and get in, great. We will have some reserves. But right now, i- if we're not gonna raise the rate to cover that legal obligation, then we have to cut something else. That's the only way to make it balance.
There's a question? So if we adopt a forty-two cent budget tonight, and this doesn't start until the first of the year, can we modify ours if, if that comes through? No, we can't lower it. No. Once you adopt it, you're done.
So we leave out this, what they plan on doing, what the county plans on doing, if that's what we leave out?
You can't.
You have to take something else out. No, you can't do that.
Something you're in control of.
Cause it's-
You gotta reduce it by something you're in control of. We're not in control of whether the county signs it or not.
And that's where the dilemma is right now for me, is because I can't go back and say, take this out or take this out because I can't put a priority on it. We're just making a number, and we're just gonna go with it and let the taxpayer pay that.
No, we could spend the time, all the time that you want, figuring out what we wanna take out of the budget, but this has to stay in. So, no, we have the budget book here. We have, finally, we have-
I mean, that's up to the council whether they wanna go, or is it a mute point on my half that they wanna increase the tax rate? I don't know. What's everybody else's opinion?
Well, they have to make a motion on that. You make motion number one, move to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-four, approving the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six annual operating budget. Do I hear a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Oh, wait, it's a record vote. Mr. Corrigan, aye or nay? Mr. Corrigan's aye. Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez is nay. Mr. Wildly? Mr. Wildly's aye. Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdeer? Aye. Mr. Ullam? Is aye. The ayes have motion number one. Motion five to one. Motion two, move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five, and twenty-six annual operating budget. Mr. Corrigan, second it. Mr. Corrigan? Vote's aye. Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez, nay. Mr. Wildly? Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdeer? Mr. Ullam? We have two, we'll pass five and one. So that's passed. Now we go to the second page. And I think I lost my cheat sheet, or is this it? No, got it. This one is seven point five. Public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-five, approving and levying a property at the lower tax rate for the city of Granbury for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Golfman, and then I'll open it up to public hearing.
I think we whipped that horse to death in spite of, in lieu of saying all that. Again, I'll just say that what's on the table at this point is a forty-two cent tax rate per one hundred dollar valuation.
Okay. Any comments here? Mr. Overdeer or Mr. Golfman?
Let me add one more fact, just to kinda give brevity, if I can get this to open up. Here we go, last page. On the last page of your truth and taxation report in your agenda packet, the no-new revenue rate is, is the amount of money that we would need to levy to collect the same amount of revenue from the property that we were able to assess last year. It's thirty-nine point four oh two four cents. The voter-approved tax rate is fifty-two point zero nine zero three. And the de minimis rate, which is a special formula that's in the existing code that I believe is gonna go away in the next legislative session based on future agendas of politicians that are sharing that, is point four three cents, forty-three point seven two five three. So we're adopting a rate less than the de minimis most rate. And that was, the de minimis rate was originally designed to help small cities under thirty thousand population buy a fire truck when you could still buy a fire truck for a half million dollars. So now they're a million and a half, and so that law is really old, and it doesn't allow you to be able to buy anything. So I would also like to add that had we had this dilemma in the next, after the next legislative session, we wouldn't have the luxury of saying a forty-two cent tax rate compared to a thirty-nine point tax rate. We would be looking at a special election because of the, the lack of efficiency provided by our county court. So let's be nice. That's the way it is, lack of efficiency. So anyway, so at a forty-two cent tax rate, you're above the no-new revenue rate by one point six cent, I believe, yeah, forty-one, forty-two, two point six cent? Is that what it is? Yeah. Two point six cents. And then you're well with under the voter approval rate by ten cents and some mils. And then the de minimis rate, you're under it by one point seven cents. So I think you struck a good middle there, if, if it makes sense that way.
Okay.
Whatever it is, I don't like it. None of us like it. It's taxes, and we don't like it, but we understand. We have to pay the bills, so.
Other comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this? I see no hands, no one standing. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four two zero zero, which is effectively a six point five nine percent increase in the tax rate? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Corrigan makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Overdeer makes a second. I need a record vote on this one, too. Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Wildly? Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdeer? And Mr. Ullam? That passes five and one. Thank you, gentlemen. We will now go to, and thank you. Ava, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ava. I know it was a lot of hard work on you and your team to put that budget document together and to work through all the department heads and the public meetings that we had. And thank you for your leadership. It was valuable, and we couldn't have done it without you.
Okay, we'll move to seven point six. And it is to discuss, consider adopting resolution number twenty-five dash one four to disapprove the proposed twenty-twenty-six budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAT, and request the refunding of monies paid for identified unapproved ventures and any unapproved ventures such as may be identified in a forensic audit of the prior five years of HCAT expenses. I put this on again, put it on last year and this year. And I will just comment on this, that the reason, the reason is that as Mr. Rodriguez points out, the HCAT was one of those entities that always seems to find money left over at the end of the year that they can be used for special projects. In one year, twenty-twenty-two, those special projects were land and building improvements. And I'd have to read the invoices, but the invoices basically say to design and build a new office building for the HCAT. In the audit last year, and not a forensic audit, but in the annual audit done by the outside firm, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars was written off as on, they, they didn't, they didn't have a place for it. There was no capital asset. The money was gone, and they didn't have a place for it. And even with that write-off, there was three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars returned to the entities. In fact, you can pass these down, this, in fact, the, uh, I might have to have one of those back this way, all right? In the last, since twenty sixteen, the- In the last, since twenty-sixteen, the entity, or the HCAD has actually expended two, over two and a half million dollars, once in twenty-nineteen, and once in twenty-twenty-three, and like I said, over half a million dollars of that was either given back or was determined to be inappropriately spent. And then this last year in twenty-twenty-four, they did spend two million eight-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, and I have not had the time to walk through that audit to see where, if anything else was spent. And I have to applaud, Mr. Ava's right. Mr. Law does a much, much, much better job of developing the budget. I just keep coming back and saying, "You guys can't spend two and a half million dollars legitimately, and you've got a budget laying out here that's two million nine-hundred-and-something thousand." And no, it is not included in the, in the pre-work here because the entities, none of the, none of the entities unless they came and asked for it, have a copy of the twenty-two-six budget because there is no regulation that requires that the approved budget from the HCAD be submitted to the entities. No regulation. The entities, to a proposed budget, deliver it to the individuals and they have to have an approved budget by September fifteenth. They can modify it, up, down, or any other way. And in fact, I've, I have a question into the entities, or into the, all the auditors right now, because in six of the last ten years, whatever the original budget was that we saw, said, "Yes, we need to approve," has been modified to a final budget, and the original budgets were twenty-two million seven-hundred thousand dollars over those ten years, or nine years, and the final budget, which we never saw, never got a chance to talk about would that be a good idea or not, was twenty-four million four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. That, you know, excuse me, excuse me, why do you even bother calling us and asking us for approval? Or, and actually, they don't ask for approval. They are given the opportunity through the tax code to present the budget to the entities, and then if the entities do not disapprove the budget within thirty days, it comes into effect. And so on you go. That's difficult for the entities to get together in a period, short period of time, particularly with the way we have to arrange our scheduling with the new state laws with three business days versus seventy-two hours prior. But the business, the, the HCAD does not have to, we, we have to work hard to deny a budget, and that's all of the entities, three fourths of them. Conversely, if the HCAD gets down to the third or fourth quarter of the year and figures out that they need a couple of hundred thousand dollars, they present it to the entities, and if the entities don't say anything, it's automatically passed. So it's very difficult for the entities to stop a excessive budget, very easy for the HCAD to acquire the funds that they need through the approval process. Bless you. I'm looking, I'm looking at the budget again. It makes no sense to me that you would, that we, all of the entities, would approve three million dollars when we're just going to wind up again, like we did this last year with three hundred and something thousand dollars relinquished back to the, back to the entities. I don't know why we think that the HCAD as a bank is a good thing. So, and, you know, we, it's not like we've been working on this for a day or two days. In fact, you go back ten years or eight years, I had a chart here a while ago, but we were approving, the entities approved the budgets of the HCAD. And during that period of time, the retirement budget for the HCAD went from forty thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars a year, stayed at three hundred and fifty, three hundred and eighty through four or five years, and excess funds that were to come back to the entities were added to that retirement budget, or retirement expense. So as today, after the audit of last year, we find that the HCAD retirement fund is overfunded by one point nine million dollars. That's how much, now it's not, it's no longer three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it's now, you know, a million here, a million there. So no, I'm, I am opposed to approving this budget that we've yet to see. But I did talk to Mr. Law today. It is at two point nine-nine something, it's close, close to three million dollars. I'm saying it should be no more than two and a half million. Am I preaching?
What's that? So, Mayor, since this is your item, I think there's, there's two completely different topics here that's related to the same entities, but they were combined in this, this agenda item. So first of all, let me ask this, a couple of questions for you, Mayor, since I, I need some understanding. So what you're suggesting to disapprove the proposed twenty-two-six budget, what specifically did you find in that budget, the twenty-two-six budget, that you think we should disapprove? And why?
Salaries, salaries are overstated. The auto allowance, I can't believe that we have an auto allowance and everybody has one, yet we have two people per automobile that go out and do audits. So, operating performance there, as is generated by the, you know, the Controller's Office does, also does an audit, and they will have a new audit out here in just a few weeks. And in fact, this month is supposed to be in three days, I've already asked for a copy. And my anticipation is at that point in time, we'll find out that again, the operating procedures and policies of the HCAD are one level above unacceptable. So, salaries are one. Where are all the collections people during, or all of the appraisers during the entire year and all of the collections during the entire year? I have difficulty just saying, you know, lining out, using the industrial engineering background, you know, where, where are the people on it at any given part of the day? And are we getting our expenses covered? And that is where all the expenses, it's two million of the three million dollars is in labor and benefits, and yet we put another hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in retirement this year, when the requirement to be actuarially up, you know, up to date is zero. So there's a hundred and eighty-five, take probably twenty out of the automobile expense, and then you take one more person out of the management there, all of a sudden you've got three or four hundred thousand dollars. So that, that's where I'd start. And, you know, there is no productivity, uh, product, productivity incentive in there at all. In fact, I believe that there was outsourcing of work, unless this is a productivity improvement, outsourcing of work for tall buildings and other areas that, you know, the expertise is not there. So, it's, you know, what I saw in the, in the original budget was, there was opportunity, there's always opportunity. I'm sure we have opportunity in our budget, as you pointed out. We have excess at the end of some years, and some of that's because, you know, we budget with this system in mind, we get a new system, we improve that system, we learn from it, and we're able to be more efficient. Not seen that initiative in the HCAD until Mr. Law came along. He's working it, but he doesn't need to keep our money in his, in his bank to, to complete it, in my opinion.
Did you get a chance to attend the public hearing for the HCAD budget?
To attend the what?
The HCAD budget hearing?
Uh, no, which one? Because you had two.
The public one, last.
The public one that, where the last one?
When they adopted the HCAD budget?
No. I did not. I was at an infrastructure meeting in somewhere else. We had representation there.
So, so Mayor, I, the reason I don't think the last request, which is request to refund the monies paid for identified, has already been pointed out, I think it's premature. We don't have, or unless, let me ask this question to you. Do you have a copy of the forensic audit?
No, do you?
No, I don't.
I'd like to, I'd like to have one.
Have you spoke with anyone associated with the forensic audit to get some preliminary discussion about what they should return?
I have not, I have not. I've been very careful not to do that. That's their audit.
I mean, so that, that's the reason I think that is, that should be struck from this agenda item, is the request to refund monies paid for, it's, we don't know what needs to be refunded. We don't need, we don't, we haven't even identified unapproved ventures or identified any unapproved ventures that may be associated with the HCAD for the last five years. I think that should be stricken from this agenda item.
Okay.
And just strictly make the motion to either approve or disapprove the proposed twenty-two-six budget.
Okay.
From the HUD Central Appraisal District. But I've seen their budget, and, and they've made every attempt to streamline their budget. Asking the HCAD to reduce the budget, they, they have to build in, in their budget, just like we build in, in our budget, some contingencies. And whatever, the difference is, is whatever they don't use, it gets returned back to the taxing entities. That's different from the city is that whatever we don't use from our budget, we put in general fund, and we keep it and we use it for projects. That's the difference between the HCAD, and it's not really a entity, it's a service that we're paying for. But since you're talking about the forensic audit, so far, since you requested the forensic audit, they spent twenty-five thousand on phase one and ninety thousand on phase two, which has costed the taxpayers over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in HCAD. That could have been the savings that we could have been looking for, that you're requesting if that wasn't requested.
Yeah, I think I want to leave that in there because, as you, you know, are well aware, yeah, the HCAD returns the money after you call their hand. In fact, they return it in clumps of one point nine-eight, nine hundred and eighty thousand, one million nine hundred and eighty thousand at one time, only after we called the hand and said, "This is supposed to be coming back." Yeah, it's supposed to be coming back, but it doesn't. And you ask why I would ask for, you know, unidentified money. Let me read this invoice real quickly. It is for architectural services through conceptual design on the future home of the HUD Central Appraisal District. This was in October twenty-one, forty-nine thousand. For the future home of the appraisal district included the expanding version of the DPS space, seventy-five thousand. Again, for the future home of the central appraisal district, including the expanded version of the DPS space, seventy-five thousand. Same verbiage, a hundred and five thousand, no, it's ninety-four thousand, same verbiage, eighty-eight thousand, those go from twenty-one through twenty-three. Now that's just, that's just, that's three hundred and thirty thousand, by the way. And then there's other activities, those are architectural, and then there's some surveying stuff, some design, civil design, new HUD County Appraisal District's office, Granberry, twenty-five hundred, then another one for sixty-five hundred, then another one for twenty thousand, and then four thousand, and then six thousand. These are all invoices that were approved and paid for a non-approved structure that has since been pulled back, said, "No, we're not going to be doing that." So, you know, as a fiduciary responsibility of everybody on this dais, you have to call that out and say, "Those dollars, those taxpaying dollars have been spent for nothing. They should never have been spent." And I think taxpayers have a opportunity, they have, they have a, I won't doubt it, I won't, I won't be surprised at all. We don't get asked, "Where is that money? And why, why isn't it coming back? And what's the HCAD doing not to participate in this type of activity in the future? What's changing?"
But I'm not saying that it shouldn't be in an agenda item. I just don't think it's appropriate at this time, since the forensic audit hasn't been completed, or a summary hasn't been provided to us.
Well.
That's, that's what I'm saying. It just shouldn't be.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it should, it doesn't have to be the forensic audit. I mean, your, your audit that was, the HCAD audit that was signed off on included two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of unallocated expenses. You could, there was nowhere for them to go, and they've been carrying them on the books. There's nowhere for them to go, you got to write them off.
The audit they had this time, the auditor said she didn't find anything out of ordinary.
Well, no. It's, she, she's been there one year. The other auditors were there for twenty years, and they didn't find anything out of ordinary when excess funds of one million and forty thousand dollars were moved to the retirement plan. They didn't find anything out of the ordinary when a million nine, well, actually, two million and forty thousand was moved to land and capital building. And all of that is directly opposed to the tax code, each and, each and every bit of it. I, yeah.
Well, Mayor, I'm just.
Well, you can, you can.
I think, I think they, we should approve it. I mean, they are making every effort, like I said. They're, they reduced the number of personnel that they had, and we're increasing the number of personnel we have. We're increasing our budget, and they're decreasing their budget. So that's the only taxing entity or entity, I wouldn't say taxing, but the only entity that takes taxpayers' money that has reduced their budget from last year. Every other taxing entity has increased. And you want to disapprove a entity that is streamlining their budget, decreasing their budget, decreasing their footprint as far as personnel, and increasing benefits for their employees?
Let's see. I think if you look at that bottom, at the bottom of that, the final budget that came in was two point nine, again, and they didn't quite spend all of that, but they, they get measured against that. I don't know how that gets changed.
Can I comment?
Sure.
First of all, on this, these budgets from twenty-sixteen to present that you handed out, only two years, twenty-sixteen and twenty-eighteen, did they spend more than their budget? So, their, that number seems pretty good. My big question is, I've been sitting here studying their budget, and it's the twenty-two-five budget. Do we even have the twenty-six budget?
Not the, not the approved one, no.
So how can we either approve or disapprove something that we don't even have yet?
Because we will not get it in time to disapprove it. I mean, you, it, the timing is such that, the timing is such, I mean, they held it, they've held it for ten days that they could have delivered it to us, but because they're not, you know, we didn't ask them because they're not required by law, they didn't give it to us. They don't, they don't want us to approve or disapprove the budget. By the way, we, we have to get six others to pull together a meeting, six other entities, pull together a meeting, and pass a resolution to disapprove the budget for them to even go back and do that. So that's my way of saying, I don't want to spend a lot of time on something that's not going to happen anyway, but I sure as heck don't want to be the guy that says, "Yeah, that budget looked okay to me." I think it's okay if we spend half a million dollars in, like in twenty-sixteen.
Are they required to give us a budget?
A proposed budget, yes.
A proposed budget, yes.
So, you did, you did get the proposed budget?
Yeah, we have.
But that's not here.
No.
No, it's not. That's the twenty-two-five budget.
It's current budget.
Okay.
It's the twenty-two-five proposed budget. So, is HCAD required to give us a twenty-two-six proposed budget?
Yes, and we have that.
A twenty-two-six?
Yes.
Where is it?
I provided it to all of you a month ago.
Yeah. It's not in the, in the deck.
It's not, it's not in here. Okay.
The budget that was adopted, we don't have, and that's why you don't have it in your packet. We didn't have a clue what they adopted.
We just had the proposal that we sent.
Yeah.
All right, I understand that.
And, and they had a meeting, and I was understanding they had eliminated a hundred thousand dollars from it, but I found out today it was ten thousand dollars.
Well, it's a decimal point on, the total budget's three million dollars or less. Two million of that's in salaries. That's where it has to be. Our budget is sixty-eight million. And, you know, we wind up with a couple of hundred thousand extra at the end of the year, or not. We may have to pull it out of reserves. It's a different ballgame, if you will.
So, so we've seen their proposed budget. We have not seen their actual budget. Are they required to get, show that to us?
No.
And are we supposed to vote on approving it or disapproving it? Is that like?
They can, they are not required to give us the final budget, their approved budget, and we can choose to approve or disapprove if we do it in the first thirty days or within thirty days. We have a time limit.
When are we supposed to get it? Like get it where we have our?
Mr. Law said he would get it to us, you know, now that we've asked. He says, I'll, I'll get it to you. So I'd say this week or next.
So why, when we get a final budget, why wouldn't we put this on a future agenda when we have that budget to review?
Because they have thirty days from September the twenty-second. Yeah.
That's your question. Who's the thirty day mark?
Nine twenty-two, September twenty-second. We can't get it back on a budget, on, on an agenda.
Because of the?
Three days and seventy-two hours.
Well, if we, if we were to receive it tomorrow, I could put it on the agenda, post the agenda on the tenth for the meeting on the twenty-third. No, I can't do it that quick.
Which, which is still a day.
Too short of a window.
Let me, let me go back, let me go back to one more thing. We have to have six others do the same thing.
Right.
We have to have three schools and county and city to, or county and toller do the same thing. Likelihood of that happening is not going to happen. But us approving this budget, that's on them. Us approving or disapproving is on us. And I think it's our responsibility, when we see actions like this, you call them and you ask for how do you, how do you correct this situation? And we can't, in my opinion, we can't be approving a budget that we know is flawed and an operating system is flawed.
Well, I don't even.
A proposed budget is flawed. There you go.
For me, it's not even so much of an issue of that. It's, how do you, how do you approve something? I mean, really, how do you approve or disapprove something you haven't seen? But if, if the problem is we have to request something to be able to review from an entity that requires our cooperation to exist, I mean, I would think that as soon as they approve it, there would be more willingness to just say, hey, this is what we approved.
Mayor.
Review it, don't approve it, whatever.
So, so I might remind council that a few months ago, you received a proposed budget. We talked about it as a council. Y'all directed the mayor to go and negotiate with Mr. Law to try to reduce the budget as much as possible to the tune of four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. He was unsuccessful at that, and so he's with you tonight to explain where you're at again with the same thing that you heard a couple of months ago. The, the budget is much larger than what the records show they've expended every year, except for this year.
Richard, you're, you're a board member. You have anything else to say?
This is the item you signed up, this is the item you signed up on, right, Mr. Have?
But I'm bringing them up so there's no time limit.
Yes, this is the item I signed up for. The only change made from the preliminary budget was a reduction in the employee medical of a little over ten thousand dollars, and that it remained unchanged. Interestingly enough, next year, there'll be two additional taxing entities in the county, a new mud in Crescent and the PID here that this council created. Now, it's somewhat interesting that the PID is totally new work for HCAD because it's the first time in Hood County they've ever sent out a tax bill for a tax that's not based on valuation. It's based on square footage, which is going to be a bit of a learning curve for, for HCAD.
Can I ask you a question, Richard?
I'm sorry, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course you can.
And I appreciate you being up because I had this question. I didn't know how to ask you. When I was at the last meeting, you all approved a contract for five years with a company that appraises things that your appraisers are not comfortable with, like not houses, but businesses or large buildings or things like that. In your budget, is that the professional services other? Is that, is that the line, because I can't find that line item in here anywhere.
Yeah, it's under professional services. It's probably other. I don't have the budget in front of me.
Right.
It, it's about, in the, last year's budget, it was ninety-five thousand, if memory serves. Next year, it's going up to a hundred and three thousand, if my memory serves correctly.
Then it might be lumped in. This is a hundred and twenty-two thousand for 2025.
Yeah, then it's in that line item, yes, sir.
It's included in that. Okay, thank you.
That's another point. Just, Mayor, you know, we pay, the city pays roughly twelve thousand dollars to HCAD for a collection of all the taxing, of all the taxes, and then in addition, as Richard reported out, we're giving them more work on the PID as well.
We pay twelve thousand for collections. There's, yeah, well, there's, the appraisal side of it too, the collections is, is just one, less than ten percent of it.
We just wrote a check for, I believe, fifty-four thousand dollars for this quarter.
We pay up two hundred.
We pay in advance.
At, at the last HCAD meeting in, in August, we received the audit from the 2024, which I don't think you've seen the results of yet. The total being refunded to the entities for that year is less than eighty thousand dollars. So the, the actual spend is quite close to the 2024 final budget.
The HCAD 2024 audit?
Yes, sir.
Refunded to taxes, refund to taxing entities, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars.
That, that was refunded from the previous year.
You're right, because you do, the 2023 refund occurs in 2024.
Yes.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
The calculation for the 2024 refund was on the, the single piece of, the single sheet document that I emailed to you, Mayor.
Right. And so the, so the 2023 now has two hundred and sixteen thousand that was spent for nothing and three hundred and seventy-four thousand that was refunded. It wasn't needed to be spent. So how much did they, so their expenses, what they excluding refunds was two point six. So take two, two twenty, two sixteen out of that, now you're down to, you know, two, three fifty or something like that. Again, not even a hat, not two and a half million dollars yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to watch to see how, see how you're able to spend it. I don't see it.
Mayor.
Yes.
Our next regular meeting is on the sixteenth. Is that within the thirty day timeframe?
Yeah, it's the twenty-third is the thing.
We can't put it in the, in the packet, but we could perhaps have it by then where we could each see it. It can't be in the packet, but I'm, I would like to.
Mr. Law's willing to send the budget over to us.
So, but it can't make it to the packet, but it'd have to be in the packet. We don't have it in the packet right now. We're talking about it. At least I'd like to see it. So I would like to make a motion that we postpone item seven point six definitely to September sixteenth.
I hear a motion. Wait, wait. I want to be fair. Ms. Landom, since we've asked people to come up, did you have something that you wanted to say, to come and say? Okay.
Okay. After you get a second, I would like to add a comment.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds.
So rules of procedure said that if you want something on the agenda for the sixteenth, you're supposed to have it in my office by noon today. So you, you might want to amend or step aside from that rule of procedure before you instruct staff to break it. And we'll probably wait for Jeremy to get back. Because the agenda for the sixteenth has been approved and is needing to go out to meet the state law that just went into effect September first. You got to have five days notice, basically, for a public meeting now. And in our planning, we, we will, well, Carlo will send that agenda out tomorrow to meet the, the guidelines of our operating procedure, which all adopted, so.
And I've been the welcome recipient of that adherence to the timeframe more than once.
So if the agenda's going out tomorrow, we can't add something tonight?
Is it noon today?
That violates the rules of procedure?
Noon today.
Yeah, it was supposed to be at noon today, but y'all just do what you want. I'm here to serve. But I'm just letting you know, you adopted rules. I'm trying to follow them. And here we are on the second day of the rule that goes into effect, and we're already wanting to change it. So why don't y'all just put this thing to bed and move on? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna end up affecting the outcome of their budget. I think we've noted that we've got controversy with the budget adopted by the mayor as y'all charged him to go and, and take care of. And the next thing is, is Councilmember Rodriguez would like to move on without anything, and y'all are wanting to table it. So I'm like, what good does it do to table it till the sixteenth, when you get the budget finally and have it in your hand? At the end of the day, nobody else can adopt a resolution in opposition to this budget, receiving it that late or them receiving it this late as well. You know, the school board meets once a month. I doubt they would call a special meeting to reject the budget for the HCAD. And the county has already posted their agenda for next Tuesday. And so that would throw them at the end of the month, which would, the twenty-third, which would make them too late for timely dismissal. So I don't know the purpose of, number one, changing the rules of procedure to allow for this particular issue, and number two, to allow y'all time to make a better decision on what the mayor's presenting compared to what Eddie's, I think is a moot point.
This point?
I think you've done a good job explaining and representing the city as you were charged by this council. I'm just looking at it from the city manager's point of view, and Eddie's done it, his perspective, from his perspective, and I think that's fair. At the end of the day, we didn't, we didn't get a budget two weeks ago to, to review, so.
You know, I, I'm inclined to say, okay, then I'll just take it away, but I'm not sure that I can do that. Plus, I'm not, I don't think that our responsibilities allow us to not vote on disapproving the budget, the proposed budget. This is a flawed budget, flawed process, and it's costing, and has cost over an extended period of time. The taxpayers of Grand, of, of the city of Hood County, taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. So, no, I, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-five.
There's already a motion and there's already a second. Am I correct? Did somebody second? All right, so there's already a motion, there's already a second. The only thing we have is discussion, and so the point of order is just that we, there's already been a motion, and there's already been a second.
Okay, the motion is?
Okay.
Go ahead.
And Jeremy, you were out for a minute. So I made a motion that apparently violates our rules of procedure because it's, I, I wanted to postpone this till the next meeting so we could hopefully get the, the budget in our hands. But Chris said that that had to be in by noon today. So I don't want to do anything that violates our rules of procedure. Can I withdraw my motion? It's been seconded. You follow?
Yeah, I'm following you, but. A violation of policy is not a violation of law.
Well, that's why I was telling, they can change the policy for this instance, set it aside, but we need to talk to you about that.
So what are you saying? I guess we're, we're trying to, I'm trying to understand the statement you just made.
My statement?
No, his statement. I mean, are you saying that?
So, so there's policy, there, there, there are rules set out in law that says that postings have to occur within certain times and, and certain, certain things. And then you have internal policies that say agenda items need to be posted by some sort. I mean, we were working on things today to get them done by noon. That's an internal policy to have them on the record today for the next meeting. The legal requirement is three days before, excluding weekends and holidays now, so basically five days.
The day of or the day posted?
So, so they, they would be posted tomorrow. The, the, the internal policy cutoff was today, so you can circumvent that policy and still be legally compliant, but that's, that's, that's your call.
I made the motion because I would like to see the budget before we vote on something concerning the budget we haven't seen yet. That doesn't make sense to me. And, and maybe nothing changes, but I still would like to be able to see the current budget or the, the new, the 2026 proposed budget before we vote on disapproving something that we haven't even seen yet. Anyway. My motion stands.
Hey, do you have a second?
Chris seconded.
Mr. Corrigan's seconded? So knowing that we will violate our internal policy, we would vote on that? I mean, that's, if, if it was approved, okay. So to Mr. Wiley's motion and to Mr. Corrigan's second. Was it you, was it Mr. Corrigan, the second? Yeah, okay. Is there any other discussion?
So bottom line of this is that we're, we're supposed to be disapproving the proposed budget. We don't have to have the actual budget. It's, it, this says disapprove the proposed budget. We've got the proposed budget, and that's why we will be disapproving. So I don't know why we would have to wait until we get the actual budget to disapprove. We're not, we're not disapproving the budget. We're disapproving the proposed budget.
Where have you been the last twenty minutes? So now what are you going to do with your bu, with your motion and second? Because we have had the proposed budget.
I withdraw my motion. If I can do that after being seconded. Since it's proposed, I thought we were trying to decide on their, their budget.
Okay. So that, that motion has been withdrawn. Do I make a motion, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-five dash one four to approve the proposed 2026 budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAD, and request the refunding of monies paid for identified unapproved ventures and any unapproved ventures such as may be identified in a forensic audit of the prior five years of HCAD expenses. Motion?
Clarification?
Sure.
Did you say approve?
No, a proposed budget forensic audit of the prior years? No. Approve the resolution to disapprove the proposed 2026 budget, yes.
It was only a clarification. I, I think they were confused as well. I was confused, so that.
Just wanted clarification on that one.
I'm, I'm all right, though, okay. So we have clarification? Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Corrigan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I have one aye and no other ayes. So that motion fails one and five. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Now we'll go to seven point seven. There is a public hearing here. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-six, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend the city code, chapter four, business regulations, article four point one six, and add a bed and breakfast hosted in short-term rentals permitting requirement. Mr. Coffin?
Karen, I'll turn it over to you on this one. I believe you're the one that drafted it, correct?
That's correct. I prepared the report for the, for the agenda. So it's, it's. Um, so it's, it's a, an amendment to the business regulations of the city code. To add a provision for short-term rentals, um, that would allow an additional penalty, um, for non-compliance. And that is, uh, such action would result in dis, disconnection of utility services. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to be clear that, um, if someone's operating a B and B illegally. Uh, we would go through a, a process before we shut their utilities off. That requires, uh, notification, uh, make sure that, that if somebody's actually living there as a residence, primary residence. Then, uh, the weather temperatures have something to do with whether you cut off utilities related to heating and cooling. And so we would have to observe all that. That's already in the, in the statutes that we've had to follow. It's not worded here that way, but we're going to train our staff to understand that, that you can't just turn them off for non-compliance. So, um, that's where we're headed. Right now, we have absolutely no. Start, uh, staunch standing because, um, if, if they were to violate and receive a citation. Let's just play this out. They could, uh, plead not guilty or appeal it to the county court level. In which the current county attorney would promptly dismiss this violation. So, uh, we need some kind of, uh, physical constraint on, on someone operating a B and B illegally. And what I mean by that is they're advertising it on VRBO or on some other site and advertising that they're doing it. It's about, the one we're dealing with in particular was a violation of the, of their own HOA rules. And also their, uh, uh, neighbors were offended and complained. And so, um, this person was advertising on, on Airbnb and VRBO. And renting the place for substantial amount of money and, uh, didn't have permission from anybody, including the city. So, we're working with that. A citation has been issued. We'll see the results of that soon.
Chris, and, and maybe you can clarify this on, for me. What about the, like, maybe it's a business? Um, the, the one thing I've thinking how this can affect other entities is like. The STRs or BMBs that are on the square. You have a business on the bottom, an STR or a BMB on top. And are they on shared meters? Or do they have individual meters for the top and then individual meter for the bottom? But how do you, how do you address those situations?
The person that owns the building upstairs that you're talking about, or it's a VRBO, owns the building downstairs. So, they are in non-compliance with that, and I would have no problem shutting them off, but after the due process, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, that, that's really the whole point of the due process. It's, it's not, it's not like. You, you locate, uh, an illegally operating short-term rental, and we say, oh, we have evidence you're illegally operating. And someone goes out and flips the switch and the electricity is off. There's a process we have to go through that requires us to send a letter, and then there's a ten-day waiting period. And they come in and we, you know, maybe try to figure it out in that time period, and then at the end of that ten days, we turn it off. If they're, if they're on a shared meter, you know, that'll go to utility billing. They'll try to figure out which account goes to what, and. They might just get shut off too.
Does the letter require a response? Like a certified letter?
Yeah, it has to be sent certified, and of course, we make every attempt to elicit a response, but if they choose not to respond, then, then they get shut off.
Then they respond.
When I saw, that's good. When I saw this item, my, my, my question was all about liability. You know, notification and liability. As long as there, it's a process, because this doesn't say that. As long as there's a process where they're notified and, and, okay.
So, we use the loose term disconnect, but really what that means is there's a process for disconnect, and, and we adhere to the legal requirements for that.
Other comments? Questions? Okay. I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five fifty-six, approving a request of the city of Granbury. To amend the city code, chapter four, business regulations, article four point one six. To add a bed and breakfast hosted in short-term rentals permitting requirement.
So moved.
Mr. Ullam, seconds?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. Motion's made by Mr. Ullam. Any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Nay. I hear no nays. That's a public hearing, first of all. I never opened the public hearing. Someone opened the public hearing. See anybody? Okay, I heard ayes, and I heard no nays. So, it's going to pass. Six and oh. Thank you. Okay. And now declare Granbury City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. City council going to closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas government code, in accordance with the authority. Oh, sorry. We don't have any? Excuse me for going to executive session so quickly. Citizen comments, uh, we have had no one sign up, so be no one speaking. And I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in open session. All members are present. City council going to closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas government code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following. Section five five one oh seven one, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Five five one oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. And five five one oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. And all council members are present. Gentlemen, any other business? No. I see no other business. There be no further business. I announce the meeting closed. Thank you, gentlemen.